What is the 22 plus program? And why should Dayton Public have the 22 plus program? And then if it's implemented, our future 24 program. So again, I'm Daniel Henshaw, the principal, Mount Street Academy, Dayton Digital Academy Guard. I'm also a, uh, a person that graduated from Meadowville High School in ninety-four. Um, I was, I've been in the district from, from K to twelve. So I've been, I've been through, uh, on the other side with the students that were up here. And I've been in, in, uh, a person, a teacher, coach, and administrator for over twenty years. So I've been around in Dayton Public for a long, long time. And I'm just happy to be here. I would like to bring, uh, Dr. Ramel. She's gonna kind of assist me walk through this with you.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Michelle Ramel. And I am the Director of Career Technical Education for Dayton Public Schools. And the reason why I'm holding, uh, Mr. Henshaw is that previously I was the Assistant Director of the Adult Options at the Ohio Department of Education. So one of the programs that I oversaw was this program. So it's a little easier for me to, to give you some of the background of it. So what this program is for is to help adults that are twenty-two years of age and older, who are Ohio residents. They do not hold a valid high school diploma or the equivalent. And i- it's an opportunity for them to earn that credential, that diploma, okay? It is free to that adult learner. There's no cost to them for this program. The diploma and the final transcript is issued by the school district of residence for that student. So if they live in the district of Dayton Public Schools, then we as a district would issue that diploma and that final transcript. If they live in Town A, then Town A's school district would issue that diploma. Thank you. The 22 plus program works as a credit recovery program. It is based off of the first year that student would have entered the ninth grade, whatever those graduation requirements were. I have them, we have them back to like into the sixties, okay? Um, so if they would have been required to pass the proficiency or the OGT, that has now been replaced by, of course, the OST. OGTs are no longer, we could give those up until a few years ago for this program. Um, it is based off, again, all of those credits. So it can be done through a credit recovery program such as, um, Apex or something else. Next slide please. So how this works is for every full course that an adult learner would complete, the district would be paid seven hundred and ninety dollars for that course. For every half a credit that is completed, it's half of that, which is a three hundred and ninety-five dollars for the, for a half of the course. For every assessment, in this case, we're talking about the OST, it is four hundred dollars per assessment. There is a five thousand dollar cap per learner, per year. Each adult learner has up to two years to complete the program. However, if they start May one, their first year ends June thirty. Okay, so if you, if, if a student needs too many credits or more credits, then you wanna, you'd wanna wait and start them in July one. So they would have a full two years. If it's somebody who only needs a couple credits, then you could start them then, and they would still have over a year to complete the program. So those are the basic components of the program. I'm gonna turn it back over to Mr. Henshaw to talk more about specifically Dayton Public Schools with that program.
Okay, a- as you can see from the slides, um, we have eight hundred and seventy-five thousand adults, um, that do not have their diplomas. So what we would like to do, we were first looking through, uh, some of our data. We lose students, um, when they, when they hit twenty-two. Um, and I would like an opportunity to start with those students, to bring, uh, our, some of our students back, to help them earn their diploma. A lot of them don't realize until it's too late that they, um, they just, they realize, you know, af- after it's all said and done, that they just, they messed up and we just need to catch them up. Once they get their diploma, it could, it could be a game changer for their life. And that's kind of what Mount Street is doing already. But it's important that we take care of some of the adults as well. So when we do intake with, uh, with Dayton Digital and Mount Street, a lot of the parents say, "I wish I could be a part of this program." Because they come to us without having that high school diploma. So hopefully, when we get the parents involved, the students will take it more seriously as well. And it'll help generate some energy and some, um, seriousness about education. Um, within some of our students that have kind of been lost, um, in the system. We have so basically, like I was saying, it just, it just promotes the importance of, of education within the families. Once the community starts building, um, some energy, um, a better, an educated community, better edu- commit. When the community's educated, it helps us gain some momentum overall. Which means better dating jobs, more opportunities, and, um, better resources for our, both adults and families. So if you go to the next slide, please. Proposed schedule. I would like to start with just one night a week, uh, four P M. to seven. And what that will do, um, well, first it will separate the students and the adults from intermixing. So we have the space and capacity at Mount Street to take care of that. Um, and four o'clock, our students are going by three. So four o'clock to seven, there wouldn't be any, uh, crossover unless it's a parent bringing their student to help them with the, you know, with the Apex program. So that would be a, uh, uh, an added bonus. Families working together, trying to get through the, uh, credit recovery. Okay, next slide. Materials needed. We really don't have, um, many materials that, um, that are required. We already have the Apex program. We have computers at Mount Street that are, um, that will be used for the adults. They won't be able to ta- check them out or take them out. Um, but they will have the ability to work from home as well. But they'll have to find their own computer or go to the library to work on the, uh, Apex system. Oh yeah, the goal guarding, it's on all, all our programs. So when the, when they actually log in, we can make sure it's done with the double. So there won't be any, uh, any cheating or anything like that. We've got that down to a bare minimum. Teacher vet. We will have teachers volunteer, uh, from Mount Street to cover, uh, the instruction if needed. Um, we recommend it was a thirty-five dollar an hour, um, stipend. Yeah, not to exceed three hours. We'll need one SRO, just for, just for added security and peace of mind. And that is, uh, time and a half for overtime. And, um, like I said, the Apex is alr- is already used in our district. That won't be any additional costs. And then once it grows to, to a level which I think it will, we will have to add a data tech to input, um, the extra, um, courses that they've completed. Uh, future plan. Course grow the 22 plus program, change it from one night to two. And then hopefully add the, uh, high school equivalent, such as the GED. So we, we can hit this two-fold. If, uh, an adult can't make it in two years, we can switch to the GED program and help them, uh, get their high school equipment. In conclusion, the Adult 22 Program, uh, will provide D P S students who are A job, an opportunity to graduate. Um, it will provide parents an opportunity to earn their high school diploma. Individuals, uh, who earn a high school diploma, earn ten thousand dollars more a year on average. It could, uh, even, even be, uh, higher than that. That's the basis of, of the 22 plus program. If you guys have any questions, uh, we'd be more than happy to answer anything.
Thank you. This was a really good presentation. It was good to hear, thinking about the 22 plus population, so I'm excited about that. I will open it up to board questions, I believe. Board Vice President Smith has a question, and then I'll come down to the side.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I want to say I appreciate you guys coming in, um, echo sentiments of our president. This is, uh, something that is definitely needed in our community. I think you hit on it when we talked about the fact that that 22 plus population, not only are some of our siblings, but are also some of the parents of some of our youngest learners. And so to be able to add that, uh, piece in would be huge. But, and with that, one of my questions was, how are we then also looking at some of the other barriers that some of our 22 plus population would look at? Namely, um, the two that come to mind are how can we assist in possible transportation if needed? And then how can we assist, maybe if we had some childcare issues, we have some that may have small children? How can we be able to assist in those? And if it's something you haven't thought about, that's fine, but just wanted to throw it out there as well.
Um, well, the, the first one, um, I'm not sure, um, meaning of course the bus routes, we have a bus route right outside of Mount. Uh, second, second with childcare. Um, we use the Montgomery County, uh, Child Services. They actually have a daycare right, basically right behind us. Um, we use that for some of our students. Um, and I'm not sure what the timeframe they're opening after, after four o'clock. So I don't know that, but that's something I can look into.
Yeah, I think they close, probably could, because I think they're around six, six-thirty. I just live in that neighborhood, so I see that, I remember that.
So I think that, that would be a, a possible conversation if we're talking about it one day a week. So, because they're usually there until about six, I would say. Appreciate that, you sir.
Okay, Dr. Pickett.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm really excited to hear what you're doing, um, because I know a lot of stories. That's gonna be a game changer. I have a lot of students that go to Mount Street right now that I'm helping, that are twenty-one, you know, like, they're really scared. They're running out of time. And so this will be a game changer. Um, there's a lot of people that come from other countries as well with interrupted education. And so it will be really, really, um, a wonderful thing for the families. And I also want to share with the board, um, that I, I, I work with a lot of the students that, that go to your school. And, and I've seen them call you on your cell phone on Sunday saying, "Please unlock this test." And so I just want to commend you because I've seen how these students can drive you crazy. They would drive me crazy. And I really appreciate that you're there for them. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Board Member Sanders.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few questions. Um, first question is, um, I see that it's seven hundred and ninety dollars for a full credit. Is this an accelerated program? Like, how long will it take for, uh, an adult scholar to get this one credit?
It's gonna depend on that adult learner. Um, if adult learner, if that adult learner has the time and puts that effort in, they could complete a credit as fast as they can complete the credit. Um, so it depends on if they're working forty hours a week or eighty hours a week, or if they're working ten hours a week. Um, but it, it, that can vary.
I, I will say, it, it's based on, uh, just the motivation of that person. But even with our students, it's the same thing. If the student's really motivated, um, and they, they work at it. We have students that work forty hours a week, but on their breaks, they'll go and get on their phone, hit Apex up, work, try to work through a couple quizzes during the break, um, work when they get home at night. So it's really up to that person. If, if they're really serious about getting a high school diploma, um, they can do, they can definitely get it done. And they have shorter time than they would in a traditional setting.
Yeah, thank you. Um, with this five thousand dollar cap, um, that appears to be about six credits per year. So is there, um, the adult scholars that we're going after to complete these twenty-one credits in two years? Are we looking for individuals that have at least nine credits? Or what is the, what is the starting point of who we are attracting as relates to completing this in this two-year timeline?
Uh, something that, that's okay. So this program, there's another program called the Adult Diploma Program, which we are not eligible to have because we are not an O T C, which is an Ohio Technical Center, meaning that we don't have adult education, like Miami Valley C T C has your Adult Ed Program. Um, so that program, we aren't able to offer at this time. The Adult 22 Plus Program, we're able to offer because Mount Street is a credit recover, like an at-risk, um, dropout recovery school. And that's why it's eligible. The, the idea behind the two programs, along with the equivalency, GED, HSETN Task, um, which are the other ones that we talked about potentially later. The 22 Plus Program, uh, when I oversaw this with the state, most of the schools would look at a certain range. If a student had no credits walking in, a lot of them, they would try to put them in the Adult Diploma Program. Because that's more of the C T E route, getting into twelve points of industry credentials and passing the work keys, um, with a fourteen composite score. So if we had a student who had no credits walk in, let's say we had a learner that walked in, they said, "I want to get this diploma," but they've got one or zero credits. You know, that would have to be a conversation that they would have to have with that individual, and how motivated they are, and if they can do it. Now, again, like you did the math, that's, that shows you, some people don't have a whole twenty-one credits. When it's way back there, it wasn't that many credits. Um, so, you know, sometimes, some schools would allow a student to come in that might be that extra credit, and they would take a little bit of a hit on that person because they had had other people get through and it would balance it out. Um, you don't want to be in the red with the program, and it shouldn't be. But it's also not something that you're going in to where you're gonna come out making, you know, the goal is to help these adults get their diploma and make a livable wage and be successful and support their families. It's not going in to try to, um, suddenly make this extra amount of money. So, but, yeah.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two more questions and one for the superintendent, if I may. All right, um, still with you guys, um, is there any special licensures that teachers need to teach this 22 plus program? Nope, all right. And what is the capacity? Um, like, how many adult scholars are we looking to? What is the capacity that we're seeing we're willing to work with during this pilot program?
Well, if that's something I can't answer for you, or we can't answer for you. The way it's done through the state is they have a bucket of money. And the, the providers, which was what we would become if we, if we were able to do this and the, um, and we got approved through O D E to do it. Then they give a bucket of money to each provider. And then that provider has that, that amount of money. So I'm just gonna make it simple for some math, even though I'm a math teacher by trade. That if we got ten thousand dollars, then we could go up to five thou- have two people, if we had the cap, right, of the five thousand each one. Um, you know, we might get sixty thousand dollars, we might get a hundred and ten. It would be the based off of, of, most of the others, they're all based off of what they've been doing in the past, since we would be a new provider, if, you know, able to follow through with this and, 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 and everything else. I don't know what the state would give us, because they changed that formula after I left the department.
Okay, and then Dr. Law, my question to you is, will the administrator at Mount Street be the administrator of this 22 plus? Or would there be a separate administration team focusing on the 22 plus program?
We ha- we haven't actually talked about that, uh, with Mr. Henshaw. Uh, it was his idea that he brought forward because he has a great, uh, passion for this kind of support, uh, for families and for our students. Uh, we, we probably need to talk about that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Board Member Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for this presentation. Um, I just have a couple quick questions for you. Uh, the number you cited, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, adults who do not have a valid diploma. What's the region for that number, is it the state of Ohio? It's not Dayton, because that's larger than our population.
That is from the state of Ohio. That is from the Department of Education's website. When I was doing this a while back, it was almost a million.
Okay, all right. I mean, I think this is a fantastic program. I'd love to see what we could do to make it happen here. I think lifelong learning is really important, particularly in regards to, um, giving people more opportunities in life. And not everybody has the, um, ability or the mindset to focus during high school. And I don't want to punish people because of that. Two more questions. Do you have any idea how many participants you would have in the first year? People, I mean, how, what do you look at? How many people have expressed interest in this, what your capacity would be?
I mean, we have, uh, capacity, well, let me say this, um, we have about a, a whole, whole space, you know, two hundred and twenty-five total, um, people in first school. But I'm not saying we want that many to start with. But I, what I would like to do is look at students that have lost, that were close, and, you know, turn twenty-two and really focus on them first and bring them, bring them back. If they're, because they, I mean, if they were one or two credits late, we can do this very quickly. Um, and then just kind of build some momentum with it. So don't go too big, too fast, you know, because I want to see this succeed.
Yeah, I, I like hearing that answer. And then, um, out of curiosity, because I'm not aware of this, what other opportunities and programs are there in the community for people to finish their high school diploma? Um, I, I think having more opportunities is great, but what, what is this already?
Are you talking about these same programs?
Something similar to this, yes.
Um, I can actually tell you providers that have the programs. I don't know if you want me to actually name those schools. Um, but I know that there is a, um, let's see, two just in the Dayton area that offer the 22 plus. One of those gear mower, there are students towards the Adult Diploma Program. Um, they have all three, so they're like a one-stop shop, is up, as I called it. Um, so that's local. Like I said, another one that's local. Um, I had a lot of the career centers from this, the, um, the state that were onboard and offered at least one of the programs.
So not a ton of programs?
Oh, no.
That were in the very, very need.
You can go to education dot Ohio dot gov, and I can show you exactly where it's at, and you can see the map. It's, it's amazing. Um, I could see this, and I have seen this happen, where it blew up pretty quick. Like, a new provider came on and they would expect to get five or ten people. And all of a sudden, word of mouth, when a person got their diploma, and all of a sudden, they had five family members running up. Um, I attended graduations as the director, you know, and spoke at them. And I would see, like, three generations at a graduation graduating. And I would sit on the stage trying not to blow my eyes out. You know, you'd have a kid and their parent and a grandparent at the same time getting their diploma or, or credential in their diploma, so.
Thank you, thank you. Those are all the questions that I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Board Member Lacy.
Yeah, I really appreciate this. My sister worked in a, she's retired, she worked, she worked in an adult education program in a, in a Minne- in a Minnesota school district. And, um, I ju- but I, I wanted, I just wanted to, to learn just a little bit about the history. I remember, uh, we had a GED program run by the district. And did that go to another agency? No?
I'm, I'm not aware of it.
Pat Day used to run it.
Okay.
Community, but that died out, yes.
It just, okay, so it just, it just, but it, it, was it like not funded by the state, or?
Yeah, it's Carolyn Day, not Pat Day. Um, Joe, I'm not sure why we closed it, but we used it now.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you, if I may, that with the, the equivalency, that is a twelfth grade level test. And so a lot of this, um, adults would struggle with that, especially when they, if they left school in the ninth grade.
Okay, that might have been.
That wa- that was a big issue.
I appreciate it, thank you. Should I just ask you all my questions about history? Thank you.
Board Member Ryan.
Thank you. Just one thing occurred to me, and I'm sure other people in this room are thinking the same thing. However we do this, let's make sure that we do it with an eye towards sustainability, especially if this is a program that is in really high need and that tends to die out really quickly. I want to make sure that if we're gonna commit to this, let's do it right.
Any more questions? All right, I have a couple myself for you guys. I mean, my main one, other than approval from the board and the funding for teachers and the SRO, what else do you need from this, the Board of Education?
Um, I really don't believe anything else. I reached out to Apex today to make sure that we'd be able to show tomorrow, adult students that were outside of the school, um, into the Apex program. And they said, "We're basically just making a, a global, um, having a P E A, um, plus twenty-two, um, action program." And we'll just contribute to that, and then we, they would be picking up all the students in the back.
Okay. Our question is for the treasurer. For the funding request that they will be requesting for the, for us, can you look into where we pull that from? Since this is a new request?
Please.
I will check.
Thank you. And then I know the program starts at twenty-two and up. Is there a age cap of how high it goes?
No, ma'am.
Okay? And when you guys get to choosing which day of the week it, it will, it will be, will you like to surveys, test the water, and see what works best, or how are you planning to decide when it will be offered?
Um, I, I, I would really try to do a Wednesday, just kind of middle of the week. Um, but if it, if another day works better, we can, we can flex that. Like I said, hopefully, I'd like to do two days a week, we, we have enough, um, students coming in, adult students coming in, or we have two days a week. And then we will see what, what better fits, um, the students the best we can.
Okay. And when would you need a vote from the board for this to actually occur? Like, what's your deadline?
I, I, you know, so I would like to start from this week.
Okay, so that's May for us?
I would need to check on the dates with the Department of Ed for us to apply for it. Uh, I'm gonna give that information to you. What that deadline, because they may have changed the timeline in the last four years, so I want to go check.
Yeah, it's like we'll look at it, because since we're in April right now, and August is right around the corner. So if, if there's some way we can be helpful, as it sounds very positive throughout the board, I want to make sure we do that. Senator Board Member Sanders has another question, so.
Yeah. Can I?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It's in line with your, uh, Madam President's question. Does the state do any reimbursement for transportation? Because Madam President made this statement, what do you need? Do you see us providing, needing to budget for bus passes or anything, or technology? Do you see any of that needing to be budgeted for this program?
Technology, no, because we'll use the computers, Al's at Mount Street. Transportation, uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Can we keep on that yet, to see what kind of population we're getting?
All right. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, everybody got a question? Thank you guys very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, well, we have our next special presentation.
Uh, next special presentation is Stiger's Study Table Update. And I'll call, um, Principal Griffiths forward, and, uh, please bring your team up.
Good evening, we're, um, this is the spring season at Valley Public. You see our coaches, we have tennis, softball, and track in the high school. A number of members in each. Middle school with a top track and some major. The winter sports enrollment is there as a comparison. And those little sports. And those are just linked to our data from the previous season. And this study table attendance picks up from where we left off with the last presentation. So when the kids came back in January, we typically have between twenty and fifty kids come to the study tables every evening. And it's broken down to the athletes that come and the kids that, well, the required athletes that come and the kids that are athletes but aren't required, and the other students. We have open study tables, any child in the building that wants to attend. The study tables are from four o'clock, sorry, three o'clock until five o'clock every day, Monday through Thursday. So these next pages would dissolve with the study tables. Last weekend. Uh, this is a repeat of what we had at the last presentation, of what our study tables look like, fifteen hours. And that is near to for athletes, but one point oh to one point nine oh, as, um, mandated by the district. This is how we do our progress monitoring, and we get our updates from the athletic directors down there. And all the kids that have mandatory study tables are contacted by our coaches, and by the athletic director, and by the two people that run study tables, myself and Terry, so we contact students, we contact the parents as well, to let them know, um, that they're required to come, and that what's available for them, that there are tutors there for table. Calculus and pre-calculus students, but typically calculus students are there as well as the teachers to provide extras and stuff.
We just wanted to touch base with the, uh, the students that were ineligible for spring quarter. What we found were, uh, the students that were mandatory study table, most of those maintained their eligibility for spring quarter. What we found unfortunately is several of the students that were ineligible for spring quarter were students that were not required, uh, to go to the mandatory study table. And one of the, the complaints the kids would have with me is they would say, well, wait, we, uh, we, we have a one-point-oh scale, so as long as I'm one-point-oh, that means I'm eligible. And so I, I want to make sure that, like, in the summertime this year as well, we continue to stress to the families, it's not a, a GPA-only scale, because the students that are ineligible are all ineligible because they're not passing the five-credit level classes that are required by Ohio High School. And the disconnect is, I think some of the students are hearing one thing, um, when they listen to the way people discuss the requirements to play athletics and to be extracurricular certified. And what they hear and what they're understanding are two different things, and, um, I think we need to make sure we stress that a little bit more with the students going forward. We have had some success with some students that were ineligible in, uh, third quarter, but became eligible fourth quarter. Uh, so we've seen some, uh, improvement, but we run study tables at Stivers for quite a while, and for quite a few years, and what we find are the kids that, uh, especially the student athletes, that know that they have a lot of practice time, a lot of game times, uh, that really care about their athletics, they really care about it. Again, what I, I, unfortunately, what we, I, I saw this year, going from third to fourth quarter, uh, uh, I'm sorry, from second to third quarter, or, I'm sorry, again, third, fourth quarter, where the students who were confused in that disconnect, because they were never on a list, because the grades were fine from second to third, and then they just assumed, as long as I keep my GPA above one-point-oh, I'm good. That's where we had to fail, you know, a little bit. It's not a large number by any stretch of the imagination, but we're still talking about three to four students that, uh, I had to intervene, uh, be with, have a conversation with parents with, and things like that. So I think that's a component we need to address in the future, if at all possible.
I want to start out by thanking Ms. Daniel, Ms. Sorrell, and of course, uh, Mr. Rosson, for putting this program together. Um, we, like you mentioned, Stivers has always had an after-school program for students to go, uh, for an hour, two hours if we, when we talk about both the high school and middle school. And I also want to thank my staff at Stivers School for Arts, because we all know that the true education, the true challenge for our students every day is to have a quality instruction from the classroom teacher. Our students give our staff an opportunity by giving them an audience every day, so that can happen. After-school tutoring helps, but the, our job has to be done from seven to three every day, and I want to thank my staff for that every day. We have small numbers of students that participate in the after-school program because of the GPA. It's because one thing for our boards, we only have twenty-six, twenty-eight percent of our population is young men. So if you looked at some of those numbers, we haven't had a freshman basketball team since I've been there. We haven't had a complete seventh and eighth grade basketball team until this year. And also, with our students, athletics, unfortunately, Mr. Rosson might not want to hear this, doesn't come first at Stivers School for Arts. We have council games, we have students have missed games, and had league games early for their obligations for our magnet programs. So, you know, our data might look a little different, because their expectations are a little different. Sports is wonderful, but they, students that audition, they're not auditioning in basketball, track, or football, or baseball. So their number-one priority is to make sure that they're doing what they need to do in their classroom. One other thing I would like to say, as a district, I would, would love to see an opportunity that we look at this one-point-oh and revisit it, as we look at all this data, and go back to probably having some more expectations for our students in regards to what they can do in the classroom. We don't want kids to dumb down and think that just, I miss, a one-point-oh is acceptable just to play a sport. We have to push them, because that one-point-oh means that they won't be entertaining us as an athlete for four years. So we want to make sure that's done, I hope that the board looks at that. And Athletic Board looking at, trying to take us back to a level, uh, not respectability, but a level of, for our students to feel that they're going to be challenged, and we have high expectations for them to meet that challenge. Thank you.
Thank you all for the presentation, are there any questions on the board? All right, I have a couple. One, the data sheets in the presentation you guys provided us, they don't actually link out to anything, so I actually can't see your data at all. If someone can correct that. It does not.
All right, I will reset them.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that would be good. On top of that, is it possible too for you all to give us data on students that are in student activities after school, what their GPAs are compared to our student athletes, and if you do know whether or not they are attending study tables or not? I know we made that request to someone else. And I would say on top of that, like, seeing that, and just the limited data that I do see on here, how the, the study table is having, is good, it's great, it is having to be attended by students in general, but I do see that your athlete population is, is lower. Do you have any recommendations on how we actually increase our student scholars to actually take advantage of these services if they do need them?
Well, when I listed the athlete population, it wasn't the athletes except for the ones that were mandatory. So like, I have one mandatory track athlete right now in middle school, and he attends fairly often, probably three out of four days, so a number of, well, I've seen a kid, like, one showing up as one athlete. There could be other athletes there that evening, but I separated mandatory versus everybody else that wants to come, whatever.
Okay, do you have the data on all athletes?
On all athletes, I don't. And when you talked about extracurricular activities?
Any, any student activity that's not sports, so?
So the arts, because every single kid has to be in an arts.
So you get, okay, so.
Every kid.
Yes.
Or they can't be at Stivers.
Okay, so yes, the comparison of all the other non-student athletes to the student athletes on just how the GPAs did compare.
Okay, so athletes versus the non-athletes, because every other kid is.
Yes.
We should definitely do that.
Okay, any other questions?
And to answer your question about the other athletes as well, um, there are multiple athletes that are involved, and a lot of it is, again, if you're not required to go, what we see is the athletes that are going when they need specific work and things like that. Um, your, your request about how we could get more athletes to go, um, I think if, uh, we could, uh, have more coach buy-in, I think that the more and more we have coach buy-in, the, I think the better that would be as well. Uh, when the coaches require the teams, the entire team to go, the only problem with that, though, is we don't want that to become a situation where you require your team to go because you're going to come late to start a late practice, so it becomes a daycare rather than it becomes a study table. Because the way it is right now, it's more of a, uh, I mean, the, the students that do go, do participate, they do actively help each other, they actually, uh, do tutoring as well. She's, does a great job, her and Ms. Sorrell, of connecting students, so that students tutor each other and help each other out. And, uh, one of our volleyball girls right now is doing a really good job of helping one of the junior, um, athletes as well, of, uh, passing her math classes, and she's basically just reteaching the lesson each day to, uh, reinforce that. So we have multiple examples of that as well. To get you the numbers for the GPA, we can definitely break that down. Uh, I think the best thing we could probably, I don't know if we can do the magnet GPAs, but we could give you like, uh, uh, what, what a class average GPA versus a, uh, an athletic team GPA beats, but is that something you're looking for?
I'm just looking for the raw numbers of the comparison, because really what I'm looking for is to see our investment in this type of part, because in addition, I mean, we have significantly invested in study tables this year, and we are looking to make sure, whatever you guys need to improve academically, if there is something that we can do as a board, I want to know that we do.
Okay.
But I want to see, again, how the people who did use the service fared out against the individuals who didn't use the service necessarily.
I would say as well, if, uh, the site coordinators could get access, in the past, uh, when we were building Level AD position, uh, I had access to, uh, the GPAs of all the students, the coursework of all the students, so I would be able to go in and actually look at that and monitor that inside the building itself. If the site coordinators had access to that information, they would be able to be an in-house service, because right now, like, to go get all this information, rather than me looking it up and, and doing the data myself, uh, or Ms. Daniel's doing it, we have to go, both of us would have to go individually to another individual to have them pull that information up for us. Where I think if the site coordinators would have access to that, I think that might benefit, uh, in the long run, it's, it's somebody in the house, uh, that can give, uh, feedback, uh, on a really quickly, a quick basis. If a kid, like, example is the young people that would come to me with questions, I would have to have them pull their hack up on their phone and let me see, what is your, uh, GPA? Because I can't answer the question, because I can't pull it up on my own computer. Or me and Mr. Griffith would sit down in his office, uh, interim time and things like that, when we're in the winter sports, where the, you have a, um, a change of, uh, the cradings, uh, where the grade changes in the middle of the season. At the interim time, him and I were taking a look at the grade point averages and going through them, but we have to do it in his office, because I don't have access to it at my desk. So that would just be one suggestion on my part.
Dr. Law, is that something we can look into?
Yes.
All right, and any, as you think about the program itself over that last year, because again, we're looking to enhance and expand in ways that really serve our kids, those are the recommendations that we're looking for of, really, the pain points and things and processes that would make this a better service to not only the people running the program, but the people who are utilizing the program.
I think the one aspect we, we're missing out on a little bit is a carrot, um, where the kids are, um, and again, I, I under, I, and, and when we've talked about this before, and I don't want to revisit in this forum, uh, the, the, the whole program, but I, I, having the kids that are, um, at the mandestor, mandatory study table, there has to be a carrot, uh, something for them to attain, to be able to regain that eligibility, other than just the, um, the GPA, where they could maybe do it in, uh, in the past, we've done a program where, um, if you were ineligible for a couple weeks, you got one warning, and then you set a week, and then, um, once you regained your eligibility, you were able to, uh, to go back up there again, and so that carrot is always, I want to maintain that, because, some people can say that's a stick, but to me, it's a carrot, because you want to maintain where you're at, because that way you see that incremental growth and things like that. Uh, and I think it's, the one thing is, when we're doing the weekly grade checks, I think because of the variances, especially like this, this quarter we're in right now, I mean, we, we had, we started a quarter, there's spring break in between there, now it's interim time, there's not been a whole lot of grades to be entered, because we have state testing right now. So you've got kids with very few grades in the grade book, but we're doing weekly grade checks. I think if we do it every two weeks, rather than every week, it would give us a better indication of the, uh, the level that the kid is actually attaining, but it would also be an easier way to monitor and an easier way for the kid to be able to see it himself as well, or herself as well.
Okay.
Board Member, Madam President's question?
Thank you, Madam President, I have a couple questions and one comment on that. So first, um, I'd like to, with you guys in Belmont being the only school that kind of have that situation with the middle school and the high school there, how did study tables in the winter go, knowing that you have different times that kids get out of school, and then the different times that the practice started? Especially to your comment, Mr. Rosson, I do with, you know, some of those teams wouldn't start practice till about six, six-thirty at times. So how did that kind of go?
We had transportation, uh, we had our girls' basketball team going to Kaiser, and so, uh, we would have study table from four fifteen to five o'clock, and then at five o'clock, the girls would come out, meet with their coach, and immediately go to Kaiser by transportation to go to practice that night. And then the boys would practice, well, you know how late the boys practice. So, but again, that's also a component of having, uh, as a seven-through-twelve building, when you have two gymnasiums, and you have a girls' team, a boys' team, you got JV varsity basketball. So the middle school boys, because, uh, typically, when, and when the past, the middle schools gotten out first, and the high schools gotten out second, so middle school practiced right away. Now, because the middle school gets out after the high school, the middle school, uh, basically has to wait until a little bit later time period. And what we found is, uh, Coach Volkey and Coach Richards, what they did is, after the study table, uh, they took several of the kids that could not get a transportation home or anything like that, they took those up to their room, and they, uh, basically had an extended study table, uh, and worked with them up there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, follow-up on then something else, with that GPA versus the past five, how is that being communicated? Um, this is not just for your building, but I think that's something we need to look at all the buildings. Like, how is that being communicated? Because even when previous GPA levels, you still, like, you could have a three, three-point-oh and still be eligible, you could pass five. Like, and then when you add in the, making sure you're taking five eligible classes. So what way is that something being talked to at study tables, or something being talked from the coach level? What way is that getting communicated? And what, in your opinion, could be better to that? Because I think that's something we've seen, um, around the district, is that you get more people that are pad, uh, missing out, because they, they have a two-point-two, they have a one-eight, they have, but then they didn't take five, or they didn't pass five.
One of the benefits of being in the building as a site coordinator, especially as an eighth-grade teacher, we're a seven-through-twelve building, I teach, uh, mostly eighth grade, uh, so I have a chance to see, um, probably, uh, because we get other students to come in, but I would say ninety percent of the student body I've had as a teacher. Uh, and so, uh, or they've been one of my students, and one of the things I always stress, uh, before they go to high school is that requirement, when we do scheduling, a lot of the times the scheduling is done, uh, in the social studies classroom in eighth grade, and I stress to the kids that, once the kids are on the teams, that's something we talk about, uh, to each of the students. Every one of the students that came to me and said, I thought, it's like, now, remember, we've had this conversation before, so I'm not trying to use that as an excuse for the students, because they know the rule, but, seriously, it's, it's amazing to hear them, you'll say that, and say that, and say that, but in their mind, they only think of GPA. And so to answer your question, I think, um, I think that the district's done a great job with science this year with, uh, athletic department, I think the athletic department has done a good job with that. And we really stress that, uh, the GPA part of it, I think we may want to put up some science like that about the importance of the number five. And the other thing is, a lot of these kids, as often as you say it, they can't get through the concept of gym, uh, phys ed is not a credit-level class, it does not count as one of the five. Where Stivers is a benefit is several of our classes, CTC classes, and some of the, um, uh, CTE classes, I'm sorry, and, uh, the, uh, the dance programs, and some of the art programs, they actually count as two, uh, credits. So if you're in the advanced dance class, that's two credits, if you're in the CTE class, that's two credits, and that's really helped a lot of our athletes as well. The one other thing is, we have a lot of kids taking classes at, uh, uh, Sinclair, and that is really, uh, something that we try to stress with the parents, when the students are going, uh, have a student athlete that is probably going to get a chance to play at the next level. And her mother and I had a long conversation the other night about making sure that, uh, she's eligible to play, or, she has five credits for the fall, or she can't play in the fall. And so she's going to make sure Sinclair's schedule includes enough credits for her to be eligible, because she's going to be taking, I think, three classes at Sinclair.
Well, another thing, and we talked about students passing five classes. Mrs. Dooly, who works with the counselor, has talked about each quarter that the counselors sit down with the students and go over their transcripts, each year starting from the ninth grade, so that they can see where they're at. Also, the counselor's got to get involved in making sure that any athlete understands that he has to pass the five credits, and making sure they're taking seven classes. that he has to pass the five credits and making sure they're taking seven classes instead of five classes. You know, our kids, by the time they get to junior, senior years, they want the minimum. They're ready to get out of here. They mess up and they're gone. So that's upon, that's on these buildings. Make sure our counselors get that information and look forward to doing those individual grade checks and credit checks for each student, each grade level.
Appreciate it then. One final thing, Madam President, if I may?
Continue.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that and I appreciate the presentation. I think you guys also touched on something that I definitely wanted to highlight. And I think Stivers is a perfect, perfect picture of it. We talk about striving as a district. I think it's, to the points that have been raised, it's a group effort. It is from the counselors, it's from other athletes, it's from coaches, athletics, it's the board, administration. I think looking, even when I look, because I've had students over at Stivers, you know, you don't have to be first chair to be in the orchestra. You don't have to be first chair to be in the band. You don't have to win a governor's award to be in those magnets. So when we talk about the lower level, when we focus at the lower level, that goes against everything that Stivers is about. Because every kid that goes to Stivers doesn't have to strive to get state awards and national awards. But they do, because it is a family aspect of how do we strive for excellence? And I think that's how I look at even this project that it is. I don't look at it as how do we, it's, to me, it's how do we get those in the bottom and push them up? Because that is why a lot of our kids excel at those programs. When we're in those programs, nobody says if you do not make first chair, we're kicking you out of the band. No one says if you do not get the solo, I'm kicking you out of choir. So then I don't think we should expect our athletes to say, just because I only need a two-point-oh or a one-point-five or a one-point-oh or a point-five, I do not think that we should expect that they're only going to get bare minimum. When they go to school with kids that are striving to kick each other's butt every day in whatever magnet they're in. So I think it's going to take all of us to say, okay, let's take that same energy that we use in some of these places to say, yes, you can hit this. But that doesn't mean that's what we want you to stay in. It's where we understand that you may be right now. And I think that's just how I look at the rest of how we do this. I'm glad that this board took this time to really look at that because we're going through these pain points of saying, how do we do it? And I know it because I've seen in buildings, students go, if I get this one-point-oh, and they get a one-two and they only pass four classes and now they're sitting. So I think that's going to take everybody to say, okay, how do we make sure, one, they know what they have to do, their parents know what they have to do, and it's up there that this is what we have to do? And then how do we create a culture of excellence to say, okay, now that you're in here, how do we get you here? So that is all, I appreciate that, Madam President.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right, your next question?
Next presentation is a budget review by Curriculum Team Rachel Murdock.
Good evening, Board President Goodwin, Board members, Superintendent Lawley, and Treasurer of Raha. I'm going to start with just an overview of the curriculum budget, then share some more specifics about some of the parts of the curriculum budget, like the EL budget and the gifted budget, which have separate lines. Then I'll do a breakdown of staff and then cover some positions that are actually funded from multiple sources, including grants. So on this first slide, you will see just the overview of the curriculum budget. You can take a look at those categories. These are the categories we typically budget for year after year. You can see that the largest category there is supplies. That's the two-and-a-half million dollar line, and that's what our textbooks come out of. So that's why that's such a large amount in supplies, that's really textbooks. And that, as textbook prices rise and rise, is beginning to become tighter and tighter every year. We have put our textbooks on a rotating schedule. We keep them for six years and then adopt them. So last year we did ELA, this year we're doing science. But that large amount is for the, those textbook fees. Within the curriculum budget is also the EL budget, the English learners' budget. Their categories are slightly different, so I did put this on a separate slide. But you can see where their materials, excuse me, where their categories lie. That five thousand dollar for textbook and for materials for them, that's a small amount. And those are just books and things that cannot be covered out of Title III. Title III really covers a majority of their expenses. The next slide. Gifted also has some specific categories, so I listed that separately as well. But they're pretty self-explanatory. A lot of theirs goes into professional development and purchase services, which also covers some of their professional development that's required by the state of Ohio for teachers who teach gifted students. And this is just a breakdown of the curriculum staff. I did list our current staff and then what we're requesting for next year. We just have a couple of changes. We do want to add halftime coordinators for art and for PE. So we'd be going from central office admin up to central office administrators. We'd also like to go up one clerical, and that is to add an intake specialist for our EL department. I'll talk about EL a little bit more in minutes. The numbers in EL keep going up. We've gone up about two-hundred-and-fifty students this year. So that intake specialist would help with intake, with getting translators, with getting interpreters, et cetera. And then you'll see the other, the final change is in EL teachers, going from thirty-five to thirty-seven-point-five. Same reason, we've gone up to two-hundred-and-fifty students, and that number continues to grow. And then this is just a breakdown of how our funding is split for some positions. Some positions are partially funded through general fund and partially funded through grant funds. And some positions are one-hundred percent grant funds. So that just gives you an idea of those positions that are not coming fully out of the general fund. And that is all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for presenting. Board members, Board Member Lacy?
Yeah, I don't know, are you saying when you go to the dollars first? Are you saying that's current year or is that proposed?
This is proposed for next year.
Any, and maybe we need, I mean, eventually, we're going to see some, an analysis like this. But any analysis, maybe we need to instruct departments when they present budget analysis. Any analysis has really helped if you compare current and proposed. What's, what the current budget to the proposed budget? If you just look at the numbers by themselves, it's kind of tough.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to send that to you, treasurer.
And, and, and we should see that from the budget director before June, too. So yeah, that's really the main, the main thing. And you do do that with the, with the people. And yeah, as long as the, the people represent, the numbers of people represent the dollars that you have in the salaries. And that's, yeah, that's my main.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one for me. So the requested amount is nine million, five-hundred-ninety-three thousand, is thirty-three dollars?
That's correct, that's the total, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation?
My next presentation is a budget presentation by our Human Resources Department. So I'll ask Chief Harmon and Executive Director Maney to come forward.
Good evening, good evening, Board. Dr. Lawley? We have, Stacy's going to introduce herself when she comes up. We're only having a couple of short slides for you today. Is that on screen? We have a few different breakouts in, in our budget. The first is the general fund, then we're going to look at recruitment, then the Bureau of Workers' Comp, and then a wellness, small amount of money that we have in wellness within the department. But the first, first item that I'd like to go through with, with you are the general fund items. Contracts that we purchase to provide services around the district are four-point-six-nine million dollars, four-point-seven million dollars. And I hear you, Board Member Lacy, about the side-by-side. When you are given that information by the budget director, or we can send it to you as well either way, you'll find that there's not really any kind of significant changes in our budget from this year to next year. Not that there's zero of that, but it's very minimal changes. One change that I would point out, like, for example, in one of our, when it goes to enrolling our staff in benefits at the beginning of the year or the beginning of the benefit year, we are, we are paying this Cummings four-year in this budget, or would be, for an English-speaking-only housed-in-the-unitedStates call center where, not English-speaking-only, but housed in the United States as opposed to outsourced, which we have had in the past. And that's, as you've heard from us about going around the district, that's one of the bits of feedback that we've been given from folks in different buildings is that sometimes when they made a call, that it was sometimes difficult to get their question answered because they had a hard time understanding what was being asked or provided to them. So we are paying for it in the United States call center within that budget. But, you know, there are really no significant changes there. We pay for an FMX module. CASNET is where our personnel files are managed, so everything is digitized. Personnel files are. Concentra is for testing. Anytime there's, like, for band driver training, for example, or well, if a person is maybe being checked to see if they're fit for duty, tested through that organization. We pay for microfiche conversion. This is old documents that are being changed over to digital. That gets less and less each year. So it would, maybe another year or two, that may get to zero. And then a lot of what we do is professional development and mileage of trying to get, get out to job fairs, like we've been doing for the last couple of weeks. And then we have some retirement recognition programs at the end of the year. And then we have some printing services. So like, for example, last year, we had signs on this building for our job fairs that we hold during the summer in the walk-ins. That was a new initiative that we started just past year, we'll continue that this year. So there'll be additional printing costs for things like that. And then our, our personnel budget, the actual folks that work in the district. And then the recruitment referral incentive, that has been something that the board has supported this last year and also the year prior. And we would ask that the board continue to support that. One of the ways that we've been able to bring in additional staff, particularly hard-to-staff positions like high-level mathematics, special education teachers, for example. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Maney for the second section.
Good evening, Stacy Maney. Our next slide here is about our recruitment budget request. Again, not much change, but we recap for you our contracts that we hold that are based around our recruitment software, our LinkedIn recruitment, Handshake Recruitment, which is a national higher education level recruitment tool that our colleges and universities are using, along with our applicant tracking system, which enables us, enables us to do a fully online application and onboarding process from the moment an applicant applies to when they're actually hired and onboarded and entered to start as a new employee. We have advertisements, several, many, many events, job postings, and of course, any of the expenses that's approved by our team to go out and find the best apparatus for our district. And additionally, we do have the recruitment incentive. And so that's for current employees that help us recruit for our district.
The next section is the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. Sedgwick is a, 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 we've used in other areas previously that we don't use anymore, but they still run Bureau of Workers' Compensation. We've used them otherwise previously and then now are in different countries. But that is what the state, how we run our Bureau of Workers' Comp claims is through Sedgwick. Then we have a Dayton Chamber of, oh my goodness, Dayton Chamber Safety Council Fund and ExamWorks, which works with the city to provide testing for civil services-tested positions. And then again, mileage for anything related to Bureau of Workers' Comp. It's a very small amount of money that mileage is.
And then finally, final slide, it's just a small budget item, but wellness incentives. And so primarily, all of this, or in fact, all this money is used each year for the seventy-five-dollar incentive for our staff members to get a yearly physical. And so that's a reimbursement for them if they go and do that annually, and that's where that money goes. And then we can answer any questions for you if you have.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions?
So the recruit, the teacher recruit, that's, that's two thousand?
Two hundred.
It's, it's only, it's two hundred?
The recruitment referral incentive for licensed teachers?
Yes.
Yes, two hundred thousand.
So, I mean, each one?
Oh, each one is five thousand dollars, so.
Five thousand?
Yes, so we offer a five-thousand-dollar incentive for the hard-to-fill positions.
Yes.
And, and it's important to note that those incentives are paid out in two payments. So twenty-five-hundred to work for a semester and twenty-five-hundred at the end of the school year.
So did we get around forty teachers from that?
Uh, we did. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if we were over that this current school year, but we can give you the exact number if you like.
Yeah, I'm curious to see how well it works, just how many. And then, the other, the sixty-thousand-dollar recruitment incentive, is that just non-teacher or?
It goes to our own staff who may, may recommend us. Hey, my sister is also a teacher, and we.
I guess I still don't know the difference between those two.
Sure, so the recruitment incentive is for new hires where we're looking to fill a vacancy with someone who's not currently an employee. And so we provide for them, the first line item we asked about, is the money that we offer is almost what other schools or districts might call like a signing bonus or an additional because that's a hard-to-fill or hard, difficult license to find. So that's to incentivize a new hire to come work for Dayton Public Schools.
So that gets paid to the hiring?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Where the other is paid to our current employee, they made a contact. And they're, they're really our best, some of our best recruiters, right? So we all.
Okay, so that's the sixty thousand.
Exactly.
So how many, and that's how much per recruitment?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
One.
One thousand. I can't, I'm sorry.
You're going to kill a bunch of servants.
Okay. So did we get six, so, I mean, it has to be successful? Did we get sixty employees from that?
It also gets paid in a one, first half of it paid out then the first half of it, then the second semester. So that allows for us to get up to sixty folks that way.
So we did get sixty folks?
We did get sixty, that members.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Board Member, Dr. Pigg?
Thank you. The wellness incentive, you have thirty thousand dollars and then you say it's seventy-five dollars a person. How many people take advantage of this?
I will tell you, and Amit probably can recall, oftentimes, we go to the treasury and we talk about funds because we go over that, in fact. And so sometimes there's a need to discuss being able to reimburse more than that thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
All right, one question for you. So your request is seven million, one-hundred-seventy-nine thousand, one-hundred-seventy-one dollars. All right, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. And I would be remiss, Dr. Goodwin, if I didn't shout out your lovely Kemp t-shirt that you're wearing today. Go Coopris, close my heart, thank you.
One more, one more, folks. Also, if you would, HR team in the back, if you would like to wave so that the board knows, our HR team is here tonight, and so we really appreciate the hard work that they do every day. And it's, it's a grind, and so thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you all. Madam Treasurer, do we have any, actually, sorry, here goes a bargaining unit. Are there any bargaining units prepared to speak? At this time?
President Goodwin, Vice President Smith, Board members, Superintendent Lawley, Treasurer of Raha, DPS staff families. Good evening, I am Neil Mahoney, and I am the President of the Dayton Education Association. Before I begin with my prepared statement, I would first like to thank, on behalf of the members of the DEA, Treasurer of Raha and her office, for the attention, the support, and the kindness she provides at her office. For our members, it is truly appreciated and we thank you. As we are reaching the end of the school year and decisions are being made that will affect the membership of the DEA, I think a little reflection is in order concerning the climate and culture the members of the DEA have endured this year. We have experienced for the first time in memory being closed out from attending the new teacher orientation, thus denying us an all. thus denying us an audience with over two hundred newly hired teachers. We have witnessed an attempt to lessen the impact of the union by trying to redefine associationally for both its members and the union president. We have seen a record number of teacher assaults and injuries while performing our duties. We have dealt with the weekly loss of our planning periods due to the shortage of substitute teachers, but more so, the district's inability to provide an environment that attracts and retains qualified teachers. We have had to file two cease-and-desist letters, two unfair labor practice complaints, and fifteen grievances concerning violations to our master contract and working conditions. We are facing a higher number of non-renewals, involuntary transfers, and resignations than we experienced last year. All that we are asking is to be provided a climate that is not built around fear and retaliation, but rather, one which builds relationships and allows us to execute our mission statement, which is, we, the Dayton Education Association, will encourage professionalism, advocate for the rights of our members, and demonstrate a positive commitment to the enhancement of public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other bargaining unit that would like to speak at this time?
I would like to hear the motion, should I wait for the motion to come up about the one-year extension?
You got, wait till we get to public conference, that's next. Okay. Next, Madam Treasurer, do we have any individual signed up to speak for the hearing of vote?
Yes.
Okay, let me read this for you. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. It is inappropriate to address any matter involving pending disputes, grievances, under a labor agreement, disciplinary action involving employee or student, ongoing labor negotiation, concerns or matters that have been already settled, or any other which, because of its nature, is deemed inappropriate or appropriate to be discussed in executive session. Can I have the first speaker, please?
Mama Noseipo.
And please state their name and address when you come to the podium.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board members, the board and the audience. My name is Mama Noseipo Glenn, 1115 Rosen Drive, Dayton, Ohio 45407. Next year, I'll be eight years old. But I still know and I still remember, even with my challenged memory, that once I was a little girl. Even today, I consciously still seek groups, organization, memberships that accommodate solely women in order to strengthen my otherwise inclusive lifestyle. I gravitate towards the end behavior to support women groups, African groups, and elder groups for my support and my reinforcement. They are my nutrition, my vitamins, and my safe place. When you are flying, adult passengers are always instructed to put the oxygen on themselves first, even before putting it on our precious cargo, our infants. This is explained to be the most prudent thing to do in order to save our lives and the lives of our children. To me and for me, this is what a girl's school is designed to do for our girls in the Dayton Public Schools. It is necessary to design classes for different age groups to prepare them for the uneven world that they face in the future. It is a compliment, not in contrast. African culture stresses societal or district life at the same time, recognizing the need for accommodation of different age group sectors without disparaging or disrespecting anyone. There are numerous and scientifically proven benefits for girls, which include just a few. A curriculum that accommodates and complements the learning styles of girls, thus elevating them in their academic achievement. Offering excellent mentoring, which frees the girls from stereotypes and then impetus them from being motivated into aim for and to achieve higher inspirations. Empowers girls, to safely allow them to be themselves and enabling them to be confident to achieve their goals. Strong girls become strong women who build strong communities. African culture teaches us, you teach a girl, you educate a generation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Olabisi Alakolade.
Very good.
Thank you. I am Olabisi Alakolade. I live at 244 Audubon Park, Dayton, Ohio 45402. I'm here tonight to really support solutions for the charity Early School. Mama Noseipo has already talked about the importance of education for young girls, with young girls and emerging women. In this particular instance, I think that it's so important that we acknowledge that we're in, and I'm a retired educator, so I'm very much aware that we're looking for all kinds of niches. We're looking for learning environments to accommodate learning styles. And as we do that, sometimes, you know, the learning styles and culture and climate for girls is overlooked. But it's one of the niches that community families find to be very, very important. I know as educators, you've heard about the achievement gap. This particular educational institution is having some success in closing the achievement gap. And I think they're having success because the achievement gap is really an opportunity gap. And as we close out opportunities, then we close out chances for families to find the right place for their students. Right place is so important. Tonight, we heard representatives from Stivers saying, well, you know, we're not really an athletic school. Our focus is on arts and academics. Well, that's a niche. When we have magnet schools, we're saying that there are students that need this particular learning environment. When we have charter schools, we're saying we have students that need this particular. We are all looking for solutions. I want us to be solutionary when it comes to charity at our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Macklin. Peter Mackland, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Madam President, my name is Peter McFerming, board members, superintendent, 15 Gate Street, Dayton, 45402. I am the regional director for Rasmun Council, Dayton, represent a couple hundred employees, SROs, maintenance consular, and other employees at the Dayton Public Schools. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Tom Ritchie, President of the Dayton Miami Valley Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO. And we want to ask your support for the one-year contract extension for Superintendent Lally. Throughout her career at DPS, Superintendent Lally has always respected all employees regardless of their job classification or title. She's maintained positive labor management relationships with the unions and their leaders, and she has strong support for work-based and career readiness programs. As you all saw, you know, in the paper, the Dayton Daily News, she was named the Ohio Superintendent of the Year for 20.30 with huge accolades for that. Her record and achievement in this district is impeccable. She's active and visible in the Dayton neighborhoods, and she's also active and visible with our government and community business partners. And as we heard tonight, she's also very active at school events, school sporting and other athletic events, at school events. She's always been a strong advocate for DPS students. So, on behalf of representing over thirty-five affiliate local unions and over thirty thousand union members and working families in the greater Dayton area, we ask you to support the one-year contract extension for Superintendent Lally. We believe, representing working families, we believe it's in the best interest of the students. We believe it's in the best interest of the employees. We believe it's in the best interest of the neighborhoods and communities that are served by DPS. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grading holdings.
Good evening, Madam President, Board members, Dr. Lally. I'm the executive director of the Dayton Building Construction, trade 1202 Second Street, Dayton, Ohio. And I too am here to speak on behalf of the extension for Dr. Lally. I took this job two and a half years ago, met Dr. Lally, and it's been refreshing to work with somebody and this board and the school system who cares about their employees. A positive approach in negotiations, fairly negotiating wages for better for employees, and a real concern for the employees. My members that work for the Dayton Public Schools are proud to work for Dayton Public Schools. They're proud of the facilities they have, and that's all under the guidance of Dr. Lally and this board. And I would recommend that you extend her contract. She has brought many things to this school system. She's made sure that Montessori schools are truly Montessori programs. The athletic program, we've just seen all these young people, that was terrific. How great is that to see all these kids involved in athletics? And it's just going to help them grow stronger and better. That's improved tremendously. She's provided strong, fair leadership, and as Pete said, she's very visible in the community. She attends the games and the functions as long as does a lot of the board members. So, I would recommend, and I hope you'll consider to extend her contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela Bailey.
My name is Angela Bailey. I live at 348 Park Drive, 45410. I haven't had a lot of sleep lately. Lots of information coming my way and truly wanting to do the right thing. I came down to the wire of where I stood on certain issues, and I had to go back to my experiences with individuals and rely heavily on individuals that I highly respect that are on both spectrums. I feel my responsibility is great, as small as it may be, and a co-administrator or concerned parents for DPS, but also positions that I hold with the parent superintendent advisory council, and mostly as a mother of two DPS students. I became super activated when teachers were ripped. As having a student at Stivers, I saw a lot of teachers highly affected by that. And I co-founded Citizens for Stivers. And I've been a thorn in Dr. Lally's flesh. But, that being said, I decided to go to work and become a substitute teacher because I wanted to put my money, per se, where my mouth was. The pay's not great. But, boy, are the kids amazing. Mostly, I ended up at River's Edge because I worked with my child's schedule. I have found that the morale has been really low. Man, we have some really great teachers, and I want to see us keep all of them. And I've seen too many go that truly cared about this district. Again, with that being said, what I've known in the past year and a half, maybe two years, is that Dr. Lally did create out of some of us troublemakers, good troublemakers aboard. And she asked us what we needed, and she has gotten us everything that we needed. I've still had several frustrations, many which preceded her being here. So, I can't put total blame on her. With parent involvement in some of the work that other people are doing to get the community involved, we're making strides. I feel like, right now, we need another year with Dr. Lally just to see what can happen, and our kids truly deserve a nationwide search. And anybody, I would love for the person to come from within. I would love that more than anything. I believe in homegrown. But anybody that is from within should uphold to any nationwide search. Our kids deserve that. Our teachers, our staff, everyone, our entire city deserves that. And I think a one-year extension would give us the time to do that. Again, this is very hard for me, but I entered into something really opposed to somebody. And I came into this building today saying, okay, God, just guide me. Use my gut, use whatever. And when they got up and talked about the Math Olympics and said that there were two students from EJ Brown, I believe he said? Wright Brothers, okay, thank you, Wright Brothers. Because they had too many and they volunteered to go help another team, boy, could we do that? Could we use that character? Then I just watch, I'm a watcher, people watcher, and I'm a feeler, so I just watched people. And then, I heard Mama get up here, Noseipo get up here and talk about character and how we need one another. If those opposing ends sides could come together, yes.
If you could.
Yeah, wrap it up.
If you extend it to three minutes, we give us a final thought.
Yes. If we could do that, what those kids did, and then what Mama got up here and said, if we could do that for our community, that would be wonderful. We need to work on morale for our teachers. And we need to not ask our children to behave well in the classroom if we cannot behave well in the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Schefler.
Hey, I'm sorry, she has to go to her grandson home. She's hoping, she's medical, she's helping.
Okay, can we go to the next, the next person?
David Esposito.
David Esrovi, 113 Bowers Street. And I guess if you stuck up to the board, you get five minutes, but I will not give five minutes to the speakers. Eight years ago, this board was in the same situation. Mr. Lacy's the only person who was here, we needed a new superintendent. You hired a search firm. You overlooked a competent, strong DPS graduate who had worked in the district his entire career, and you had narrowed him out of the final three. And of those final three, you have one went on to go to Springborough and had his license removed. You had another internal person who just left the district after really not accomplishing much. And then, the third person you hired, who obviously didn't undergo any background checks through the search firm or anything else, you hired this person and you fired her after two years, after you let her buy Mr. Lawrence out. You bopped her out. You set this district back decades with that absolute disaster. Search firms are not the answer. The answer is real leadership. Real leadership. If Dr. Lally was a real leader, there would be somebody sitting right behind her, ready to step into her shoes, and you wouldn't have to do this. I learned that in the military. None of you are veterans. And I'm going to tell you something that you probably don't know. My friend David Lawrence is a veteran. My friend David Lawrence is also a well-known person in this community. You don't need to do a background check because we would know. And he is known by this community, by the preachers, by the athletes, by the politicians, by the people in the neighborhoods, the parents of the children he's taught. He's made home visits in this district more than anybody else. He is the future of DPS. And if you continue to disrespect this strong, black man, it makes you into racist. I am flat-out saying, this is getting embarrassing. He has a PhD. He has multiple master's degrees. He still has records that stand from Welcome Stadium in track. He knows about school. You know how I know this? Because when he was the principal of Thurgood, the scores rose 20 points in three years. You don't have another administrator that can claim anything like that. So what are you doing? Because I know one thing is true. If you pass him up this time and screw around with a search and another year of Dr. Lolly, he will not be here in a year. Because he will be hired by a much larger district who respects his intellectual approach, his skill set, his ability to solve problems, because he is a leader. You seven are embarrassing us. You are embarrassing our community. If you think you're going to find somebody from out of state, from someplace else, that is going to come into this community and figure out what's wrong and figure out how to lead when you've got 29 buildings that Dr. Lolly probably still needs a GPS to get to some of them. I'm sorry. I've been in buildings run by Dr. Lawrence. Teaching was going on, people were learning. It's time for you guys to think twice before you go on this crazy idea.
Mr. Esrobi, that's what I'm trying to say.
You can learn to say my name too.
Are there any other speakers?
Esrobi, Esrobi, you should know that by now, Cassandra.
Lisa Lucky.
Board members, treasurer, superintendent, life is not easy to sit behind that. Polio, I did it for 12 years. Well, I'm here to talk about two things, real quick. Dayton Public Schools was the number-one school district to graduate GEDs for several years. I mean, Clay Dixon and went to Joyce Dent, and then went to Carolyn Day. Reason we lost that, the state decided, now the state rep, to give the GED program, the adult education, to the CTCs. It was a terrible mistake, and that's why our numbers plummeted. So I commend you guys looking at this again, because I guess you will produce more graduates than any other school district around the Dayton area. We had sometimes five to six hundred people sitting on the floor at the convention center graduating with their GED on the Dayton Public Schools program. So I commend you on that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is so important that you guys work as a team. The superintendent and the treasurer is part of that team. Going to schools as board members should be the most important thing because you get your foot on the ground, you know what's going on, your tires on the road. It's so important to get that pulse and the feeling of schools. And the superintendent should encourage board members going to schools, going to parent-teacher conferences, when parents have a parent-teacher conference there. Just seeing a board member there makes a big difference in things that you care. Make the board members care. It's so important that when you choose the next superintendent, that you have a succession plan in place, that you have somebody that's educational, smart, does not have any baggage coming with them from the district, even their inside person. You've got to make sure, everybody's not going to like everybody, but you've got to make sure that when you put a person at that head seat, as Dr. Lolly is, that the foundation of the educational part strength is there. Anybody can run a school district, but no one can educate a kid unless they know what the classroom is like, know what it's worth with parents, know what it's worth with inner-city kids. And I get offended when someone says, "Just because you're not a black person or just because you're not a white person, that you don't understand different districts." I have more family members in this school district than anyone else had ever had. I have 2,100 in first and second cousins in this area. And over 80% of those individuals either had a taste of Dayton Public Schools or graduated from Dayton Public Schools. When my nieces and nephews left here, they left here for full rides, not paying one dime because this school district made sure that they were educated and made sure they had all the tools they needed. And also, want to talk, leave it with that, guys, work together as a team. It's so important. And this year, whether Dr. Lolly decides to stay 10 more years, because I also went over for 12 years, I'm going to do three superintendents. Whether she decides to stay 100 years, make sure you bring a person in that first works on your educational side. Then they can go to the administration side because she, they, she has to understand the education part to make sure that our kids are successful and our children are successful for the future. So just because somebody can think they can run a business department does not mean they can run a school district. The other thing I was going to say that...
Mr. Lucky, you got about fifteen more seconds.
Okay, my prayers are with you, and make sure you learn from the past that you don't make the same mistakes in the future.
That concludes tonight's hearing of the public...
One more, I have one to come back.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Hi, my name is Lydia Sheffield, and I'm a teacher for Dayton Public Schools. I just wanted to come and say I have learned so much from Dr. Lolly, from her teaching us the graduate police. And I mean, actually, for a superintendent to actually come inside, educate us, I think that is so wonderful. She is born with us, she has been out to the classroom. My grandbaby, I asked him, he said, "She is such a good superintendent." I said, "Well, what is a good superintendent?" He said, "She supports us." I said, "What do you..." He said, "She was right there supporting me at the speech contest." He said, "She was right there, the magical one, supporting me." I said, "Supporting you?" He said, "Yes." He said, "She's right there." And not only that, she comes into the schools and checks on us and see what we're doing. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much for what you have done and the things that I have learned from you. I truly appreciate it. You have been an excellent superintendent, and I just, my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No.
Okay. So now, new business part one. Okay. Is there a second? Is there a recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
What was the recommendation?
Yeah, I say it, the recommendation, and you got to move it down.
Sure, I recommend a approval of one-year contract extension for Superintendent Lolly is listed.
Madam President, I would recommend, I mean, I would recommend that we waive the 48-hour rule. It is in there?
No, I said, "Let's start there."
I, yeah, since this is...
Would you like to retract for a second?
I will retract that motion.
Okay, there you go.
Because the actual, yeah, the final draft of the contract, we didn't see until within 48 hours, and then I motioned that we waive the 48-hour rule to consider this...
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second, are there any questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote on waiving the 48-hour rule?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Dr. McKitt?
Yes.
Ms. Reina?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. Now may I have a recommendation under for the new business item?
I recommend approval of one-year contract extension for Superintendent Lolly is listed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
To move the second, are there any discussion or questions? Board member Wiganey?
Thank you, thank you, President Goodwin, thank you, board members, thank you to everybody who spoke tonight. I certainly appreciate you all. I think that it's important that we recognize that the board's responsibility here in not acting quickly with regard to or in a timely manner in opening up our search last year. I have worked under the assumption for years now, a few years, a couple of years, that we had a superintendent that was planning to leave. And I have enjoyed my relationship with superintendent, I appreciate her work. But I also recognize that one of my motivators in running again this time in my second term was because I really wanted to be a part of selecting the next superintendent for DPS, being that I've spent six years on the board and I've been in the community for 45 years and I'm a business owner and I have two children that have gone to school here. I feel like I have a lot of input to provide on what I see. I would like to see Dayton Public Schools' next leadership look like as I have had the pleasure this year to work along with President Goodwin and the leadership team who encouraged us for the first time in my five years of being on the board to really get out in the buildings. Because up until this year or last year, it was a time when we were not encouraged to be in the buildings, that things were, you know, we wanted to keep things tight and run in a way so that we didn't disrupt education. In this journey of the last year of being in the buildings, and thank you so much for allowing me to be there, I have, I just, I can't see, the more you see, the more you see. And so I continue to see just such deep gaps that I struggle with how we're going to fill. So when I have the opportunity to hire new leadership and identify some of those really important pieces that I want, I would like the leadership to look like and some of the characteristics that I need, they need to embody to bring, to fill these gaps. It's no disrespect to the current leadership, but I believe that it looks a lot different. So I am not going to be in support of another one-year contract for that very reason. The last six years, the top 10 schools in our district are located on, 85% of those schools are located on the east side. The bottom 10 schools in our district, 85% are located on the west side. And when I go to E.J. Brown and I see 17 substitute teachers on a daily basis and full-time teachers that are struggling, struggling with these really critical issues around safety and getting, I mean, our kids, these beautiful kids are wonderful, but they need, there's just a lot of need there. And I'm not, I'm not a leader in that regard, but I can say that the track that we're on certainly doesn't lay out a pathway to fill out any gaps when those numbers still exist like that. I believe fully in supporting, I want the board to work together. I certainly understand the impact of our board appearing as though we all agree all the time. And I want to agree and I want to have those conversations, you know, while we're here amongst you, but I want to have positive conversations around all of this. So I do believe that culture and climate at DPS has long time been an issue, and that's not a result of any certain leadership. I think that it has existed for a while, but I do believe that leaders create culture. Culture drives behavior, and behavior produces success. And the decisions that we make on this board today, we won't feel the impacts of them for years to come, a couple of years. We might, we've done great work this year, we've brought great work to athletics. Goodwin, Smith, and I, with great leadership, we have really driven a lot of work out there. I'm really proud of that work. So, but I want to change and I'm going to continue to advocate for change. I suspect that the contract will be approved and I will respectfully and gladly work along with the superintendent as I have for six years and with our business leaders and whatever, but I thought it was important for me to take an opportunity to express myself in this way. And so, thank you for hearing me. That's all.
The board of the Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. For clarification, I think because this is a polling matter and the agenda of... The motion was to adopt an extension. This is not an extension of a contract. Dr. Lolly resigned, and so I need to make sure we have the right wording. It would not, this would be a new contract, this would not be an extension of a contract. So before we vote, I want us to make sure for record say that is correct.
Accept a friendly amendment?
Yes, I would.
A friendly amendment to change the life order to the approval of a new one-year contract and the word "extension" out of your previous voting?
I accept that.
Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other? Seeing none, or member, Vice President Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I think when I look at where we are, I look at multiple things. I know we talked about and it was spoken on how where we are almost regarding a search. I look at that and I see that that doesn't really go along with what I think is where we are because as I look around this state, I look at a district in our state like Akron that just approved a search and it hit the news today. We look at Columbus, that had just opened things up a few weeks ago. You look at these groups and it's not as if you need a year to find somebody, especially when we know that if we look at history, and one thing we have to do is quit avoiding history. Like, we've gone down this rap, we've gone down this hole, we're going to do this search, and some of that history has been laid out. And even when we look at that search, that search was initiated at this time in 2016. That superintendent was announced before the end of June, the middle of June. That process took from the end of April to the beginning of June. Parents met these people in the beginning of June. A person was selected five days later. So it is not in my mind where I think, "Oh, we need a year to say we need to go out and do a national search." Also, when we talk about doing that, it's a process issue then for me when we say, "Okay, we need to do this search. It's announced we're going to do this," and then to then say we need to make a different change because we are not ready for next year. We're looking up, if you look around just the area, there are districts that have put in interim superintendents while they did searches. There are districts that are doing these kind of things. There's districts that are larger than us that have then went out and got firms. If you look down Memphis County, a district that has almost as many kids as we have citizens in our city. They went out, used a firm, got three people back, and just this past week said, "We spent all this money for no reason because we don't like any of these people that you just went out and found."
Amen.
That is kind of, that's our thing. So my thought is, I do not want to go out and look like Columbus. That just said, "We're going to spend 250,000..." gonna spend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do the work that the seven people here can do, to do the work that the community can do. And this is no, no means saying I do not like our superintendent, but like also Mr. Sampson said and was also reiterated, we had a situation where our superintendent had resigned. So then this put our district in a different position, this put our community in a different position, and to then change up now to me is a very quick shift, which is quicker than what we would say we'd take on this search thing. So it's like, we can switch quickly, but now we're saying we need a lot of time for a search, which just isn't true. That isn't true. We are, we are not a huge district. When we look at these big firms, there are firms that are going after a Columbus, which is three or four times bigger than us. They're looking at other places that are bigger than us. When we look at districts that are closer to our size, I look at a Kettering, which is a few thousand less than us, and opened up a search, and within a month and a half, said, these are our candidates, and a week or two later said, this is our superintendent. So to say that this is where we are because we aren't further enough in a search process to me, is not a fair thing to tell the community. When this community saw the last search process start right now and end quicker than we talked about even getting someone, that is the history that we're ignoring when we do that. We're ignoring the history that previous boards have also done the same thing. We look at this district and that is the district, almost policy of superintendents. We either do a sweep, done searches, where the search firm comes back and we've spent money for no reason, because the last couple of times that we use search firms, we did not pick who the search firm came back to us with. So essentially, we gave money to a search firm to then have us tell the search firm, thanks for looking at these resumes, but we don't want to go with them. And now we're gonna go back to the community after we spent the money to look for people. That is what happened. The last superintendent that we got, we did use the search firm and, and no speaking ill on that person, but the community had said when they came, we don't like that person. And the search firm says, okay, well, this is the person we searched out and got for. Previous to that, the search firm went out, when we had Dr. McGill as a, as an interim. The search firm goes out, didn't even tell the board who they looked at. The board gets the last candidates, the board goes back and says, to hell with the search firm, just say, we're just gonna keep McGill, after we paid people to go search. This is the history that we cannot ignore. Whenever we want to do something and say, okay, well, we need to go use this, and I am not against a national search, but I also look at, even when we talk about those searches in previous times, this district was a lot larger than we are now. This district is not a district of fifty thousand students. This district is not twenty-five thousand students. This district is a small Midwestern city district, which, I'm not gonna lie, I, I just don't see the need to go and say we need a broad national search, when I'm looking around a district that I can point out four, five, six, seven people in the district and around the district that have superintendent licenses. So it's the process to me of saying, this is the only way we can go, when it isn't true that that's the only way we can go. And I think that we have to start moving in a way to say, okay, then let's look at where we are, let's look, okay, we, we aren't where some of us would want us to be right now. But that does not mean all is not hope, all is lost and we now need to switch course and do something different. I do think there is a culture, and that culture has improved, but that does not mean the culture is where it needs to be. Two things can be true, and I think too many times this district has a culture of fear where you have to believe either this or this. And if you don't believe everything is rosy, and you don't believe everything is going to hell, you don't exist. And we have to get away from that. And the people who either feel everything is rosy, where we pumped up to speak, and the people that do not like it, their only choice is to leave. And that has been this district's policy in a way, this unspoken rule, where people leave. When we look around this area, we look at other districts, their principals are from here, their leadership and administration staff are from here, their teachers are from here. This is where they're from. So I believe if we're going to do this, let us be honest about what we're going to do. And I think that is where I am at, when we talk about where we are and why we have to pivot on the decision where people in our community felt one thing was happening, they felt a change was happening, and that is where we are. If we did not feel that was gonna happen, then we should have let them know, hey, no change is gonna happen, and we'll keep moving. Now, me as a person, I know, I'm going to work with whoever is in the superintendent chair, because that's what I was elected to do. I'm not here to be Will Smith, I'm here to be Will Smith, which is elected by people. And so I do talk to people, I do get in the schools, I do talk to community members, and so there is no one thing, there is no one thing is rosy, but there are different people and there is a culture of fear in this district. And until we work on it, we're going to still get the same return for returns. And even if that is with Dr. Lally, we still have to work on eradicating this culture of fear. Fear cannot exist in where we are. People shouldn't have to come up to the podium and be fearful of giving their truth. People shouldn't have to be fearful when they see a board member in the building and be fearful of giving truth. That existed before Dr. Lally, that existed before our previous superintendent, but that does not mean we let it continue. We have to get rid of this culture of fear, and that's the only way we're gonna grow. So I could say, I've taken so much time, Madam President.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam President, I appreciate the time. I, it's eight-ten, I don't feel like I've been here a long time though, because we have celebrated our children and we've seen the accomplishments, accomplishments that they've had this year, whether it's academic or whether it's athletic. I'm so proud of our children, so proud of what they are capable of, I'm proud of their pride in this district and their status. I'm grateful and proud of people who show up to a board meeting and are here almost three years, three years, okay, maybe I stepped a little long, three hours later. I'm grateful for how much everybody in this room cares. I acknowledge that. We may, we might not always agree, but we care deeply about this district, about this city, about this community. I spent about two weeks ago some time at a conference and Dr., Madam President was there as well too, learning from my colleagues from across the country, which is some of the important work that I do. There's so much to learn from people who've done this before, who've done this for a long time. And I eagerly meet them and talk to them and ask them questions about what we've been facing, what we've been dealing, dealing with, and I've gotten so many good recommendations and pieces of advice. I've learned to ask questions that I didn't even know that I needed to ask, and I'm truly grateful, particularly for some of the conversations that I had two weeks ago. Because looking at this job that we have in front of us, only one of us has gone through a search process before, only one of the seven, and this is one of our main jobs as board members. I take this very, very, very seriously. When I came in six years ago, being interim superintendent, we had an interim superintendent and we decided to hire her, and she's still here, and I'm grateful for the work and the love she has for this district as well too. Looking around at these kids, you know, thinking about my kids, my kids have only gone to Dayton Public Schools, and I'm so proud to say that. I've thought a lot over the last six months about the intentionality that I will go into choosing a new superintendent, and how I feel like it's my job as a board member to work with my board members in doing that, with the fidelity and the transparency and the thoughtfulness that I know it requires, wanting to get things started sooner than they've been able to, and understanding the intentionality it needs. Thinking about when I help my children with their math homework. My seventh grade child, who was recognized today, I was so proud to do that, when she does her math, she has to show her work, she can't just say what the right answer is, even if she knows what the right answer is. It is my responsibility as a board member, when we choose the new superintendent, to show our work, because our children deserve the very best. And our children, our teachers, our staff, our community and our city deserve to see our work as well too. We expect it from our seventh graders, we should expect it from ourselves. I am grateful for the agreement that we have from Superintendent Lally, if we vote and keep her for another year, to give us that time. Whether it's a local candidate or somebody who's not local, we will show our community, our district, our students, this is the right person. And I'm so grateful for that opportunity and for that trust you have given us. I'm grateful for the opportunity that we have for you all to voice your comments tonight, and for the ability to continue the good work that we all know we're capable of. That is all that I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Anybody else? Or have we forgotten?
Mine as well. So I just want to point out that this has been an F district for a very long time, and in 2019, we went to a D. There's that report card right there from 2019 as to how we got there. And we were achieving, the achievement gap was being closed, that's where we got an A. Today, when I'm looking at the growth for the, for the district, early literacy for third grade for the district is sixteen point nine percent. So just to get an idea, three percent is what it would be considered growth. We have students who grew sixteen point nine percent, and we're talking about students that just finished their third grade. And that is probably extremely crucial, because when, when kids leave the third grade and they are ready to read, they can learn. These kids are gonna be ready to learn. In addition to that, we have the fourth, fifth and sixth grade reading with a growth of five percent. And so those are some of the things that I'm looking at. This district is number two right now on the highest literacy rates in the state when it comes to third grade English, ELE, score test. So just wanted to point that out. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Ms. Wiegany?
No.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Four yeses, three noes.
Before we go to our next recommendation, can I just add, we have a five-minute break. Thank you.